No old business evening, that will take us to new business. Item one, which is consideration and action to award a contract for bid schedule E. Does anyone want a presentation? Just kidding, Mike. With us is our Public Works Director, Mike Payne, for a presentation on this item.
All right, we're starting with a little humor here, so that's good. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Council. We're here this evening to talk about the Woodman Center and specifically the award of a public works contract for this project. Before I get into kind of outlining what's included in the contract and project costs and project funding, I would like to introduce Brian Hatson, who is seated to my right here. Brian is a principal architect at Zimmerman Architectural Studios in Milwaukee, and Brian and his team have led this project for almost the last two years that we've been in the design process here. So if I can't answer any questions about the facility itself, I'm hoping Brian can bail me out with that. But here is a rendering of the project as it would look, looking from Milton Avenue. The facility would be located at the existing and vacant Sears store at Uptown Janesville. The Sears store will be demolished if this project moves forward, and we would be constructing a new facility essentially in its footprint. I thought it may be helpful if I run through a few slides and just remind the council and the public about the timeline on this project. A number of our speakers did pick up on certain milestones here, but it has been six or seven years that this project has been in concept in the community and in front of the council. In 2017, the project was included in the city's strategic plan. In 2018, the city and the Janesville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau commissioned the feasibility study, and a steering committee was formed. The steering committee was comprised with representatives from the Janesville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, JACBB, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Janesville Youth Hockey, Janesville Jets Organization, and a variety of city staff. In 2019, the site selection process identified Uptown Janesville as one of two preferred locations in the community. Also in 2019, the city and JACBB commissioned a business plan. Moving on to the fall of 2021, that's when the council took a vote and authorized $2 million to commence the design and bid the project, so we knew what the actual cost was going to be. We had heard that, you know, costs had escalated over time and wavered a little bit depending on a variety of circumstances. The first meeting of the design committee was held on March 22 of 2022. The committee again had representatives, had a city council member designated, a variety of city staff, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, JACBB representative, Rockstep Capital, who owns Uptown Janesville, the Friends Group, hockey representatives, the design consultant, including Brian and his diverse team, and a consultant who the city retained to assist us with the cost estimation of the project itself. The design committee met 18 times throughout the process. Every meeting was properly noticed by the city manager's office as a public meeting. It was held in open. The public was invited to attend, and we worked through kind of three conceptual aspects of a design project. So we started with conceptual, I'm sorry, schematic design. That led to design development, and then we completed the process by finishing the construction documents, which ultimately were used for bidding this project. The council expressed an intent to borrow the funding gap, which was 17.3 million, at a meeting on December 12 of 2022. And then on January 9 in 2023, we commenced regular project updates at council meetings under the leadership of Acting City Manager Chief Moore. And we conducted those for the entire calendar year of 2023, and in total, we had 20 updates to the council where folks were provided an opportunity to ask any questions and learn more as we were progressing through the design development and ultimately the construction documents themselves. On November 3, we issued bid documents to contractors. This happened after we received a letter of intent for the state to provide the 15 million. We were kind of on hold so that we could complete the funding package. We felt that it would be irresponsible to move this project forward and start having public conversations about receiving bids if we didn't know how we were going to fund the project. Bids were opened on December 19, and then on December 20, we closed on the property from Rockstep Capital that had been in the works for a very long time. And at that point, that was somewhat strategic that we closed at year end because as of January 1, 2024, the property was off the tax roll, and the city was not on the hook for paying for property taxes for a portion, a prorated, a significant prorated portion of the calendar year. On this evening, January 22, council is here to consider a word of contract. And I guess what I'd like to point out is between the bids being opened on December 19 and the consideration of a word this evening, typically, the construction industry and quotes, price quotes from vendors are typically only good for about 30 days. And in this market, with logistics, what they are, and with the economy, what it is, typically, those costs are good for 30 days. And so we're basically at that point where it's about a month apart. And so we were strategic in scheduling this this evening because of the way the construction industry normally operates. My last timeline slide here is a look at the anticipated future timelines. I can't predict the future, but this is what I think is going to happen based on what I know. So February 1, the city council is scheduled to have a special council meeting and study session to discuss specific funding options for the city's $15.3 million. Sometime probably late February or early March, I would expect the contractor, JP Cullen and some of their subs, to mobilize to the site and commence with building demolition as step number one in moving this project forward. Substantial completion in the construction documents is identified as May of 2025, and we would anticipate moving into the new facility and obtaining an occupancy permit midsummer, probably July of 2025. So I wanted to share as a reminder, I know we've looked at this a number of times throughout our updates, but wanted to put this again in front of the council and just quickly highlight the three main components of this project. So on the left-hand side, this is our multi-use convention center that also can be used for sporting events, sport court flooring, in addition to conferences and meetings. In the middle section, we have our multipurpose arena, which can be used as an overflow for conference space. It would be an ice arena for approximately six or seven months of the year, could have sport court flooring, could have turf for soccer and things like that. And then the third space on the far right in blue here is the main arena. That would essentially be a full around the clock, around the calendar year ice facility like we have now as our standalone Janesville Ice Arena. Accepting the alternate bids as part of this recommendation, added alternate one was adding the fourth regulation basketball court in the lower-left portion of the image here, as well as a single-story addition on the south side, which would be the right-hand side of the image here. This is where the varsity team lockers are going to be constructed as part of the project. Adding these two alternates, because we weren't sure if we could afford them upfront, they were bid as alternates, that way we can decide to accept them or not accept them as part of the project. That increases the size of the project footprint to approximately 123,000 square feet. And because the main arena is essentially a two-story facility with the mezzanine that's over the top of the green locker rooms immediately adjacent to the ice rink, ice sheet here, the total project with the two levels would be approximately 140,000 square feet of essentially programmable space for the project. So now that you have your bearings on the project, Zimmerman was gracious enough to update their video animation that the council saw one prior time. They have incorporated the two alternate spaces in that video. You'll be able to see that from the exterior, and this is an artistic expression of the project that Brian and his team have prepared, and it's just a few minutes. And there is sound that goes with this. All right, the next slide here is a summary of the bids as we opened them. What we're looking at, we opened three bids. JP Cullen's bid, left to right, is low to high, so JP Cullen and Sons. You've got down the left-hand side, base bid, and the variety of alternates, and a total there. JP Cullen is in yellow. Iron Construction is just a few percentage points higher than Cullen as the low bidder. And as we look to the right here, Pepper Construction of Wisconsin out of Milwaukee, again, only a few percentage points higher than the low bidder. So what this is telling me is very, very tight bids, very close together, a reflection typically that plans and specifications told the story, and there wasn't a lot left to imagination. So that's good. Sometimes we have one real low bid and a cluster at the high end, or vice versa, and sometimes we're wondering, what does that mean? And did we miss something in the documents? But this is pretty, this is very tight, and I think it tells a good story. Okay, total project costs here, recommended construction from the prior slide, $38,129,609 is the base bid plus the alternates that are being added. The owner's soft costs at about 3.3 million. The owner FFNE furniture fixtures and equipment at about 1.4 million, and then 9% contingencies brings us to $46,756,600. The examples of soft costs, if you're wondering what might be included in soft costs, the big one is the architectural and engineering fees, as well as surveying costs, closing costs for the property, geotechnical studies and reports that were done. Utility fees paid directly to the utility providers, like Alliant Energy, that's not part of something that's in a construction bid. We're going to have to get some new electrical infrastructure, relocate some gas main and major things there. We would pay that directly to Alliant Energy. And then an equipment replacement fund, we've heard about that a few times this evening. We do have $400,000 included in these prices under the owner's soft costs for equipment replacement. As far as the owner-provided FFNE, you know, it's furniture for the entire facility. That's anything from breakroom table and chairs to office furniture to the atrium and public spaces, tables and chairs for the convention space, appliances, a variety of stages, signage throughout the building, and a second ice finishing machine, sometimes referred to as a Zamboni, is included in that. So with those total project costs here, just a reminder that we had, we were expecting total project cost, and that's what we've consistently been speaking to the council about, is a total project cost. We didn't want to just focus on one component of the project, for example, the construction. We wanted to talk in terms of a complete comprehensive total cost for the council's awareness and decision-making here. So we were expecting that the total project cost was going to be in that $50.3 million range when we were opening bids. And based on the good news that we received the day we opened bids, we're just shy of 47 million, so we're feeling really good about that. Again, I had mentioned 400,000 is included in the replacement as a designated replacement fund for equipment in the soft cost line item. In addition to that, what we've been talking with the Friends Group about is in year five of their funding for this project, they indicate that it's likely that they'll have, or they're anticipating about a half a million dollars that they would provide to the city at the end of year five, and that would be designated for a capital equipment replacement. So we're feeling good, staff is feeling good about this, that, you know, as we come off of our warranties for a new facility like this, in year five, we would have almost a million dollars already designated and set aside for equipment replacement. So I think we've been proactive there. Any project that you consider, we always bring forward a project funding that matches project costs. And so you've seen this table many times before, starting at the top. City funding, previously, the city was looking at 17.3 million. That's the commitment that the council made and expressed an intent to borrow up to 17.3 million to close the gap on the project. State funding of 15 million, private sector funding of 9 million, the federal appropriation of 5 million. Very early on, JACBB provided $25,000 to kick off the start of the design, and then the council provided another $2 million to allow us to get where we are today. The Jets contribution per their lease is 390,000, and then Milton and Janesville schools are contributing to their locker rooms for a total of $41,600. So project funding equals the project costs, and just wanted, it was included in my memo, but wanted to point out that, you know, where we sit right now is with the city's 15.3 for construction, as well as the 2 million for the design, when you look at that as part of the capital stack for just under 47 million dollars, the city's contribution to this project is 37% of the total project costs. So we feel really good. A lot of people did a lot of work, and we had a lot of positive relationships and positive partners along the way. As one speaker talked about, the stars needed to align in order for this to happen. And so we, anytime we can spend, you know, invest 37% of the project cost and get something that we've been talking about for a number of years, at the end of the day, I'm feeling good about that. Again, the floor plan for the project here, just wanted to highlight the existing ice arena. Existing ice arena was constructed in 1974, so this year it'll be 50 years old. It's been about a dozen years since we've invested in that facility and made some improvements. It's, the existing facility is old and tired, and the replacement costs for the main arena, so if I look at the blue ice sheet here and the locker rooms immediately adjacent to that, we had the, and some atrium space. We had the consultant that was working on this team, who outlined the $50.3 million. We had them run an exercise, and if we wanted to replace a single ice sheet, and we wanted it to meet the current standards and basically be the right-hand side of the box here, that cost was estimated at $29.5 million. That's because all the design costs, all the contractors' mobilization, all of the space is for basically one function. And so with the partners in the Friends Group and commitments from the state and federal government, we're just fortunate to be paying 37% of the total anticipated project costs here because had the council chose to move forward with a single sheet of ice to replace our 50-year-old facility, I don't think that we would have had federal money or state money or had a significant community campaign to raise those types of funds. So the recommendation this evening is outlined in the memo, but it would be for the council to award contract 2023-15, which is the Woodman Sports and Convention Center. That's the base bid plus alternates 1 through 5. The total amount for the construction contract is $38,129,609. And then you would be expressing an intent to borrow the 15.3 million with the understanding that there's a February 1 council study session to talk about financing options. Do you borrow it longer term or shorter term? Do you pay the same interest over the life of the loan? What does that look like? How is that packaged? That's something that the council will need to decide as a policy decision. And before I take questions, or the rest of the team takes questions, just wanted to point out that the city has updated the frequently asked questions and reposted those on the city's website. And then attached to the staff memo this evening, there's a four-page fact sheet with updated information that we hope that you found helpful as you kind of studied the information here. So with that, Council President, I would be happy to answer any questions related to the bids or the award of construction contract. If there are other questions, I may need to defer those to other staff because my focus has been on
Sure.
on this aspect of the project.
Thank you for all your hard work, Mike. Any questions for our Public Works Director?
I have a question, probably more suited to either City Manager Lainer or Finance Director Goddick, is when the project comes in as expected and we don't use all or most of the 9% contingency, and when the Friends amount already is 5.6 million, after their secondary cost returns more than 9 million, how is that money treated by the city?
So typically, typically, this, these funds would be borrowed likely in a category of facilities and grounds. And if we don't spend the money for the intended purpose, which would be the Woodman Center, it would remain in that borrowing category. And the next time we had a significant capital project that was in the facilities and grounds category, the cash on hand, essentially, the leftover contingency or unspent contingency would be applied to that project, just simply move forward in that same borrowing category. And typically, if it were a public works contract that were coming forward, in our schedule of project funding, we would refer to prior borrowed funds, and that would be what this is. And then, you know, what's the gap that we need to borrow? If I answered that appropriately, that's typically how we would handle that.
Those funds, is it possible that they could be used to pay down our borrowing earlier than projected or at all?
For that question, I'll defer to the Finance Director.
Thanks, Mike. Dave Goddick, Finance Director. Typically, on a note issue, there's a period where you can't refund it. We could use the funds potentially to pay the debt service and not have to tax for So that's, that's an option. I think as Mike indicated in his presentation, we, based on the council's action tonight, we'll have a study session to really dive deep into what all of those financing options are.
Just to follow up, Dave, I think Councilman Nino brings up a good point, but I guess how I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we're so fortunate that we don't spend our contingencies, and the Friends Group brings in nearly 10 million. That would be a great quote-unquote problem. We have this extra money, and we, wouldn't we just replace other borrowings? I mean, it would be six of one, half dozen of the other, let's say. City Services Center, we are now in this phased rehab of City Services Center. So we would just reduce our borrowing for City Services Center, for example?
That would be what Mike was talking about when we talk about prior borrowed funds.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
At some point, the city ends up borrowing less money
Yeah.
for something.
We wouldn't just be spending it on, on something, you know, it would, it would more than likely reduce future borrowing.
Either way, that would require some kind of action by the council, correct?
Typically, when, as Mike pointed out, when they bring a contract forward, they list out what the different funding sources are. And so we would say, you know, there's future, or pardon me, there's, there's previous unspent borrowing dollars. So that would be the council's opportunity to approve that.
Just so that I can add, the way bonds are written, you can only spend it on specific things. And so we'll write, the bonds will be written to say Projects of Public Works, facilities and grounds and other things associated with that. You can't spend it on other things like operations, for example, or things of that nature. You have to spend it on specific things that we would otherwise, if we had money left over, we would otherwise borrow for.
I think if we could direct our, if we have questions for Mike, great. If we've got non-contract questions, I think what I'll have everyone do is if you could direct them to our city manager, and then he could field it or delegate, if that works for you, Kevin. Earlier tonight, people have talked about our operations plan and these previous studies. Could you speak to the city's due diligence on the operations plan?
Sure. So we've had a minimum of three studies done on the project, and both the operations studies came to the same conclusions, and that's roughly that the facility is going to be supported by tax dollars between 40 and 90,000 annually in its first five years of operations. We went through, I went through both of those operations plans as we go forward, and I think that the things that you should know as a council is that they are done very, very conservatively. They're done conservatively on the revenue side, and they should be. And we should be very careful in how we look at the facility, how we operate it, and all sorts of things. The other thing is that we are going to apply the very best business practices to run the facility as we move forward. I'm confident that we'll be able to accomplish those goals as we, as we look at the facility. Those plans indicate that the city staff would run the facility. That's how we can do it. We will review whether or not it's value-add to use a management company and bring that information to the council for their consideration in the future. But the bottom line is that they were conservatively done. Every business plan projection like that is going to have disclaimers that say these projections may be incorrect because they have to, because you can't predict the future. But we have successfully operated facilities for a long time using good business practices with good oversight and good management, and we're going to continue to do so.
Other questions for our Public Works Director or for City Manager? Councilman Miller?
I had one. I know that in your drawings, Mike, you had explained how the high school locker rooms would be up in that mezzanine area. Am I correct?
The high school locker rooms would be a single-story
Up on that second story.
addition on the south side of the building. My reference to a sing, the second story was a walking mezzanine, or essentially the stadia seating, where the greens, the green spaces immediately adjacent to the blue rink here would be first floor level, and there would be concrete stadium seating that went above that and kind of, you know, like a walking path, walking track. Folks would fill in the seats from the top down, like at most football stadiums, as opposed to currently at the ice arena today, everybody walks in between the glass and the seats and then walks up to their seats. So this design provides a better experience for So this design provides a better experience for spectators. But the varsity locker rooms would just be an addition, single-story height on the far outside of the building.
Okay. When you specifically mentioned Janesville and Milton High Schools, I'm wondering if there's been any further discussion with our co-op girls' high school hockey players, the Fury? Because I know at one time there was, then there wasn't, then there was, and there wasn't.
Sure.
And so I'm, I'm feeling like we're excluding this entire group of our community girls and I don't want to do that.
Sure. Yep. Good question. I wasn't involved with the negotiations with either Milton School District or Janesville School District. So I'll see if Jennifer Petrozella was able to address that question for you.
The Rock County Fury, which is the co-op team based out of the Beloit School District and is a county, county-wide team, actually it extends beyond Rock County as well, is very welcome at this facility. There, they currently utilize our facility for practices a couple of times a week and have games here. They have a financial situation where they are able to use a rink in Beloit at zero cost. And so as long as that continues and Beloit School District remains their hosting agency, it appears likely that they will continue to use Beloit as their primary ice rink. However, as I said initially, they're very welcome here.
As long as they pay market rate?
That is the expectation, yes, that they would pay the same rate as Milton High School would pay.
Okay. I ask, and this is why, I know that in 2022, the makeup of their team was seven out of 13 girls were actual Janesville residents. And so that being said, it's almost as if they're not so welcomed. So that's why I ask. Thank you very much.
Would Janesville youth hockey be required to pay a fee for ice time?
Yeah.
So it's no different?
All user groups would pay for their ice time.
Correct. So there's no difference between Fury and what youth hockey?
And ultimately, the city council can choose what rate they want to charge to those user groups. But the basis of our discussions so far have been to have that be an equitable rate. And the Janesville High School currently pays a lower rate or zero based on a shared facility use agreement in which the city receives compensation and the ability to use their facilities, which is not, would not be the case with the
But even though they're Janesville School District girls who are playing for a co-op team, that makes it a little gray.
Do you have other questions for our Public Works Director or for City Manager Lehner?
I see no questions. There were three, well, we received dozens of emails. Three of them were submitted in public comment fashion and we neglected to read those earlier. So I think I'm going to ask the clerk to please address those three written comments that I forgot to get to earlier.
Okay. Kristen Mickelson, 3912 Balmoral Drive. My apologies for not being available at tonight's meeting, but I appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinion in hopes you choose to move forward with the Woodman Sports and Convention Center. I was born and raised in Janesville and I'm proud to be raising my two children here. Though there is not a strong hockey following in our family, I feel the WSCC is so much more than that. I'm excited about all the possibilities for out-of-town tournaments, wonderful trade shows and large conferences that may choose Janesville for the next big event. The amount of business this building can drive to our city would benefit so many, whether we even take a foot inside ourselves or not. Example, my employer is considering booking our annual conference that holds between 400 and 600 people in 2026 or 2027 as we are starting the planning process now. What an amazing way to showcase all the things Janesville has to offer and bring in more revenue. Please note each year we have six other venues in the state that can handle our capacity and conference needs. Having the WSCC in Janesville will add another city to our rotation and the fact that it is Janesville excites me. With children's parties, family gatherings, a safe place for people to go and enjoy sports, crafts and other skills, I'm truly saddened at the backlash this project has gone through thus far. Please consider moving forward with the WSCC. I don't want to see this prime location stand vacant when there is a great opportunity for growth, education and creating a place for more memories. I want Janesville to grow and prosper. I want to see buildings open, not closed. I want my children to have more amenities available to them than I had. I want my children to be as proud to grow up in Janesville as I have and want to stay here. I want to show my support for the city staff and community. I want Janesville to be a great place to remember visiting, not just a place they stop to grab a bite and fill up their gas tank. It's so much more than that and the WSCC is more, is one more way we can showcase that. Thank you for reading my comment. I appreciate your time and consideration to move forward with the WSCC. Erin Olliston, 3219 East Rodmer Road. I recently came across a statement expressing a belief that residents should be happy and celebrating the eventual Ice Arena at the Uptown Mall coming from the city manager. While I appreciate the efforts to enhance our community through such projects, I feel compelled to address some concerns that have been circulating among residents. It is evident that there are differing opinions within the community about the Uptown Mall Ice Arena project. Some residents feel that there has been a lack of transparency and inclusion in the decision-making process. Concerns have been raised about the dissemination of information, one-sided commissions and the absence of a referendum, which has left some members of the community feeling excluded. I believe that fostering open communication and addressing the concerns of all residents is crucial for the success of any community project. It's essential to create an environment where diverse perspectives are considered and decisions are made collaboratively. This not only strengthens community bonds, but also ensures that the interests of all residents are taken into account. I urge you to consider the importance of community input as you take steps to address the concerns that have been raised. Engaging in a more inclusive dialogue, providing accurate information and considering the possibility of a referendum in the next decision could go a long way in building trust and ensuring the community feels heard and valued. I understand the complexities of such projects and challenges involved in decision-making. However, I believe that a more collaborative approach on your part will lead to a more positive outcome for everyone involved. Thank you for taking time to consider these concerns. I hope that we can work together to create a community that thrives on transparency, inclusivity and mutual respect. Bridgette McDonald, 1149 Home Park Avenue. Thank you for taking the time to read my comments on the proposed actions regarding the Woodman Sports and Convention Center. I think the proposed WSCC would be a great development for individual families and the city of Janesville as a whole. As has been shown time and time again, when a venue such as this is built, it benefits the city in which it built. It is built. I lived in Milwaukee during the development of the Fisser Forum and the Deer District. It was incredible to see the change to the neighborhood that would increase, with the increase in people visiting and led to an increase in businesses such as hotels, restaurants and other services. Obviously, this project would not be on the same scale, but it too would be expected to bring increased people and dollars to the city of Janesville by providing a space to host more sporting tournaments, conventions and people/teams looking to use public athletic facilities. The proposed site is also easier to get to than the current Ice Arena and has more parking than the Ice Arena and other locations in Janesville that host indoor athletic events. The site is near shopping and restaurants, which increases the likelihood of people spending more money outside the Woodman Sports and Convention Center while they are there for an event. The current Ice Arena is wonderful to have, but it is something that does not drive people like the new arena would. My daughter and I enjoy ice skating and recently attended a Noon Years Eve event hosted by the Friends of Woodman Center. This was a wonderful event, but could have been better in a newer facility with better lighting, more updated amenities and more room to skate to allow more people to participate. I have a friend who played hockey for Beloit Memorial High School back in the 1990s. I was talking with his family about going ice skating in Janesville and he chuckled as he remembered the Ice Arena, what it was like here in Janesville when he was in high school and the fact that it's still largely the same decades later. I think the proposed Woodman Sports and Convention Center and agreements to make it happen would, should be approved. The city of Janesville and its residents would reap benefits for years to come.
Thank you. Is that all the written comments?
That is.
Okay. We handled our questions. Councilor Jackson?
I have one question and it's just been in my craw and I didn't know whether or not to address it. There's been a number of misstatements or misinformation that has gone out tonight and we can't correct any and all. But one in particular has troubled me a great deal because it impringes upon my character and integrity and that of this body. And that is that there's been closed and secret meetings where the Woodman Center was discussed. Not only would that be a violation of policy and law, but it would indicate something that I don't think anyone at this table would want to be a part of. And so, Mr. President, I'm going to ask you in front of everybody, you would know, have we had any private, secret meetings concerning the Woodman Center? I'm not aware of one.
No, this council has had no private or secret meetings.
Mr. Lehner, same question?
No, we have not.
Thank you. Thank you. Enough.
That takes us back to new business item one. Do we have a motion from the council? Councilmember Verdic?
I'll make a motion. I move to award the base bid and alternate bid items one through five for contract C 2023-15, Woodman Sports and Convention Center to J.P. Cullen and Sons Incorporated.
Second.
I have a motion to award bid schedule E by Councilmember Verdic, a second by Councilmember Jackson. Anything further, Councilmember Verdic?
You know, I'm not going to get into the numbers and the pros and the cons of this. I think that's been said over and over and over again. I just want everybody to know that if this does go through and we do award contracts, this is just a step in the process. We still have other decisions to make, you know, information to vet, be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars moving forward. And with the staff that I've dealt with, I mean, I'm pretty confident with dealing with them that they are more than capable of making good decisions. So that's why I made the motion.
Councilmember Jackson, anything further?
Yes, I do. I really appreciate the process. It's been long. That's an understatement. And I told my wife yesterday, I think I've had 50 or more emails in the last two days and I try to answer every one. I think I've missed maybe three or four because they just came in in a mess. There's been probably equal numbers, positive and negative, over the course of my time on the council. This has been the number one issue in terms of totality of emails and calls and so forth. But as I have looked at it, I appreciate the process, questions of openness and so on and so forth. My goodness, there's been so many meetings, so many opportunities for you to communicate with the council and we have tried to hear what you have had to say. I think it's been an exercise in democracy and it's been my privilege to have heard from you, both pro and con. And believe me, you, your words have weighed heavy on both sides. I have considered and knowing these individuals at the diocese, your words have weighed heavy on their hearts as well. Thank you for participating in the process. Whether it goes the way you want it to or not, you were a part of it and it's a win for Janesville. We worked it out.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I was very pleased to see that J.P. Cullen was the low bid on this. They're a great local company, been around for more years than, even longer than I am old. But I've known quite a bit of the family. However, there's always a however. We're, I'm being asked to approve a 30, a plus $38 million bid, committed to it. Before we're having our meeting on February 1st to discuss the options on how we're going to fund our part of it, the 15.3 million. To me, I wouldn't buy a car that way. I wouldn't buy anything expensive that way. I'd have my financing and know the ins and outs of the financing before signing the contract. We're being asked to sign the contract and then discuss how we're going to finance it. And unfortunately, I can't do it in my best conscience that way. So I will be voting against it. Nothing against J.P. Cullen. It's probably going to get approved. They're going to do a fantastic job. I'm glad they came under bid. And nothing against the hard work that's been done on this to get the donations, but I just truly can't feel comfortable voting on a $38 million contract without knowing exactly what the bottom line is, what it's going to cost the taxpayers in the long run. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
I, I don't want to piggyback on you, but I will, I will also mention that I appreciate and have all the confidence in the staff for the time and the effort that you have made over the course of, what, six years toward, toward this point in the project. However, but I have, I have more faith in contracts than I do handshakes. And without a business plan and a financial plan, I cannot move forward. It would be a disservice to the taxpayers.
Anyone else wish to comment on this item?
Just real quick, through this whole process, which has been long, there's been a lot of thank yous and all that. I want to make sure that we get a real big thank you to the donors too. We've talked about people that raised the money and the people that did all the work. But the community of Janesville, Woodman's being one of them, sitting here being represented today, boy, did they step up for this. And it just, it says a lot about our community and the people that we live and work with and play with. So thank you, thank you to you all. This is going to be a great project. I'm so excited about it for so many different reasons. Councilmember Jackson mentioned it, you know, there's concerns. People say, well, we haven't been part of the process. It's been secret. Just in love, I think you said 20 meetings we've had just since January of last year that people could have come here and talked. We had updates every time. This is Psycher Bowerman. You've talked to a few people, I think, over the last few years and Christine as well. So there's been plenty of opportunities for the public to be involved and to learn more. So I'm excited. This is a transformational project. I'm so excited to be a part of this. So I'll be voting to move it forward.
Speaker Mina, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, you know, so often, serving on the city council, we deal with things that are relatively mundane in nature, things that have to be done, but that aren't particularly exciting or life-changing, budgets and stuff like that. But tonight's, tonight is different. Tonight, we have an opportunity to do something for the city of Janesville and its citizens that will make a difference for years, decades to come, long after we've all left the council, well, with the possible exception of Councilmember Williams, of course. But this is, this is a big event and it's a great step forward in my estimation for the city of Janesville. The city's going to benefit in so many ways, directly, indirectly. You know, one doesn't have to be an ice skater of some sort or a conventioneer of any sort to see benefit from the WSCC. One point that's always impressed me the most is that with the WSCC will come what I believe to be tremendous development. One of the slides that I don't think came up today, but has previously, shows what Rockstep has in mind for the use of the mall property once the WSCC is in place. You know, a hotel where Boston Store is, a 200, 200-unit market rate apartment complex where the parking lot is across Lexington, a children's or a youth activity center where the remainder of Penny's is. All of this will increase the valuation of Uptown Janesville. As Bill Mira said, people are, are moving forward with plans based on the WSCC's completion that will redevelop so much of Milton Avenue. All of that will come with increased valuations. I think it's very likely that over the period of the next five years or thereabouts, that we will see valuations increase to greatly mitigate the cost of borrowing to the citizens of Janesville. The WSCC is going to bring wonderful things to the city in my estimation. It is, it's going to be something that our citizenry can be very proud to have, to drive by up and down to, to drive by up and down Milton Avenue. I think that this is an, an event that rarely occurs. I mean, we don't build things like this often. And this is an event that, in my estimation, should be celebrated and will truly be just seminal in the, in the near future of, of the city of Janesville. I think it's a wonderful event. Everyone in the city is going to benefit from it in all likelihood, whether you favor it or not. I'm very proud to be able to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. I just want to mention, I guess, address a few things that have been mentioned earlier. The borrowing options meeting on February one, which might get rescheduled for later in the week, by the way. I mean, I'll take blame on that. I don't think we've ever in the council been involved with different options in borrowing. And City Manager Lehner, to his credit, said, this is a big enough project. I want to bring you guys different bond options. Can we do a special meeting and bring that to the council? Normally, we don't get any say. We just authorize the city manager to do what he thinks is best. So this is a whole nother step that the council and, in effect, the community is going to be involved in. So thank you for that, but I'll take blame for that. The other item is, we were accused of being, I think, the highest tax community in the state, and that's just false. I would encourage you all to review our budget presentation. Well, you will see our comparison, just the numbers, and you can play around on the state's website that City Manager Lehner provided, but we are near the bottom, almost any way you cut it, as far as our tax rate. Cities like ours are always rising and falling. I've said that a lot of times over the last seven years. There's less to do in this community now than when I was growing up as a kid here, especially during the winter. Less to do for kids. And I think we all on this council have a duty to make sure that we are doing what's best for the city of Janesville and for future generations who live in the city of Janesville. We need to make sure that our city is going to be competitive to keep our best and brightest here and hopefully attract new people here. We need, we're always going to need new businesses, new people, new ideas coming to this city. I am, for one, am very thankful to our prior councils who chose to make game-changing investments in our city, like Hedberg Public Library, the Arise Project downtown, Camden Playground, I mean, our huge park system, our trail system. These were millions and millions of dollars invested into these projects to improve the quality of life here. We previously committed via resolution to borrow seventeen-point-three million. So the fact that this is coming in at fifteen-point-three million only makes that an easier decision for me. I think the number at seventeen-point-three million was thirty-eight dollars per year for the median home and taxes. This will be less. You know, I want to just note that the state of Wisconsin believes in this project to the tune of fifteen million dollars. The federal government believes in this project to the tune of five million dollars. Our local friends and neighbors and business owners believe in this project in the amount of nine million dollars. And I believe in this project, too, and I'm happy to support it. There are too many people to thank, but I would like to thank our city staff who've worked so hard on this for so many years. Our city manager Lehner, city manager, former city manager Freitag, deputy city manager McHugh, Jennifer Petrosello, Mike Payne, Shelley Slaypack, Dave Godak, way, way more people that I'm sure I am forgetting. The Friends Group, who've been mentioned a few times. Like Bill said, you just never gave up. Boy, I mean, I heard in the community, when that sixty million dollar came, number came out, everyone said, don't these people know when to give up? But Bill, you, Christine, Larry, Angela, Oakley, a lot of you are here today. You just didn't give up. So thank you so much for that. I'm happy to support this project and excited to see it move forward. Now that everyone's had an opportunity to speak, please vote. And that motion passes five-two, with Burdick, Benson, Marshak, Nino, and Jackson voting in favor. Miller Williams voting opposed. Feels kind of anticlimactic, but we'll move on to. Item two, council, common council announcements. Any announcements from the council? Well, I, I also want to echo Councilmember Jackson's comments. Thank you all for coming this evening and speaking, given your opinion on this project. We appreciate the community input that has been so appreciated over the last seven years. So thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Williams, do I have a second? Second by Burdick. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.